Okay. R5. Discuss the grant agreement with Center for Tech and Civic Life, CTCL, and spending plan is approved on April 9th, 2024, and consider waiving attorney-client privilege to release all email and other documents related to CTCL to the public. This is sponsored by Supervisor Jones. Supervisor Jones?
Thank you. So as we got into this topic a little while later, it was apparent that we needed to, you know, at least for the public's sake, to waive our attorney-client privilege to release these emails. And again, there's 175 emails, and I think the public is entitled to those. So this all started for the supervisors when I was Chair of February 28th, 2023. At that time, the item came up as R3. This was to approve a grant agreement with the Centers for Tech and Civic Life and award Shasta County Elections a grant in amount of 1.5 million, with an expiration of December 31st, 2025, is what was on R4. I made a motion not to accept these funds. It was seconded by Supervisor Kelstrom. That motion failed. A substitute motion was made by Supervisor Cry. That substitute motion was, made by Cry, to direct staff to drop a counterproposal with language stating that the only use of the 1.5 million in grant funding would be to purchase real property or to build a new building for the Elections Department and to strike out the ability for the CTCL to sole discretion to request the return of the general funds. What this was relating to is if you take a look at the CTCL grant, and if you take a look at item number 12, you'll see the language that's there. This was to replace that language. And that was sent forward. And so then we have a variety of these emails. And I would like to talk about these emails, but we have not waived the attorney-client privilege. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we waive the attorney-client privilege for all emails and other documents related to the CTCL to the public to view. That's my motion.
I'll second it. Okay. Counsel Lawmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CEO is in possession of a redacted version that's been approved by counsel. Within the documents that you have there, there are sections that are not related to CTCL. And I don't believe it's the intent of the board to release the attorney-client privilege on other matters. So I would request that the motion be amended to release and release the attorney-client privilege as to the redacted documents.
Is the maker of the motion okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay. So that'll be the redacted version provided by county counsel. And the second, which is me, is okay with that. We'll go ahead. Supervisor Garman. We'll take public comment here in a sec.
Okay. What did we just, what were these handed to us?
Those are just placed on there for the meeting tonight, yes.
Okay. So I have not had time to review this. I would like some more time. So I'd like to put this off at least one meeting so I have the time to go over this to see if I agree with redacted version. So I'll put in a motion to, a substitute motion to bring back the next meeting.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take public comment. Let me ask you this, Supervisor Garman. Would you, would you take a few minutes during close, if we, during the recess of closed session, peruse it, look through it? Because quite honestly, like this, this is, I mean, I respect that. You and Supervisor Rickert want some time to look at it. We have been talking about this for a while. And for me, I would like to not bring this item back forward, but I would like to give you a few minutes. So I'm just asking, maybe you flip through it during the 30 minutes of public comment?
How many pages are there?
Well, there's 174 emails, but...
I meant that, fast of a reader, sorry.
No problem. First, yeah, a lot of it is, like, you'll have a thread. So I just, I looked through just for a couple of seconds. And you'll have one email, it will be five or six pages. So that's why...
I just want to make sure it's okay, because it's, you're asking us to waive attorney-client privilege. So I want to make sure that...
Totally understand that. But the most important thing is transparency to the public. So regardless of what's in there, if the county counsel, you know, we'll get to public comment. I respect that. All right. Steve Cohn. And then Laura Hobbs, two minutes. And then Dan. Then Thomas H. Then Antonia. Those are the first five. And then after this, we have a scheduled hearing. Then we have some public comment.
Good evening, Board, Staff, community members. So there were a lot of public comments at the last meeting that were untrue, that would support looking into this issue. And I'll address just a couple of them. One thing was Holzinger, an individual that you guys wanted to appoint to a very significant position, stated that there was a requirement in gaining this grant that we turn over the voter rolls. That's just patently false, totally incorrect. Okay? And I mean, it's been propagated, and people bring it up over and over again. It's just false. There was also stated that Kathy Darling Allen and the Elections Office lied and misled the board with regards to this grant. That's untrue. I was at the meetings, you know, when it was put off, and then she brought it back saying, "Okay, we could buy a building." She looked and looked and could not find a building. This happened. I mean, weren't you guys here? Did you miss that? I don't get it. And so she couldn't find a building. And then when it became apparent that you guys were going to have to replace the Dominion system that you got rid of, they, she suggested that we use that money, you know, about a million dollars in order to get the equipment we needed. You approved it. You voted for it. But what the heck are we talking about here? I do not understand. Falsity after falsity. There was, anyway, several untrue things mentioned about this. Laura Hobbs, she said that Kathy intentionally, you know, misled and lied about what was going on. She did not. It was, the, the fact that the Heart Machines Katali was right in the agenda. It's written in the agenda. It can be brought up. You can bring it back up. So anyway, you're relying on a bunch of garbage. And I know a lot of you are good people.
All right. Laura Hobbs, followed by Dan L., followed by Thomas H., then Antonia.
Good evening, Board. I think that we need to actually release the attorney-client privilege on the full unredacted file. Furthermore, I believe that we need to make an ordinance that outlaws our county Elections employees from serving on a partisan, far-left-leaning organizations' board. CTCL and SEER are both founded by David Becker. They're funded by the Soros's and the Zuckerbergs. And these people are not nonpartisan. We should not have anybody on our county payroll who's being also wined and dined by the, these far-left-leaning organizations. We should also make an ordinance that stipulates immediate firing of any employees who are insubordinate in any county department, whether it be, you know, here with the county clerk of the board or within the Elections Department. Elected or not, I don't care. They should have...
Please bring it back to CTCL.
This is exactly related to CTCL.
It's getting broad.
Joanna Franceskett was guilty of insubordination when she wrote these emails and tried to subvert the will of the board. Period. She should be fired, honestly. That's insubordination. I'm asking you to do something to hold people accountable. If you don't do something and take action, these type of things will continue. You guys have the ultimate say and the ultimate authority. And you need to use that authority. Thank you.
Dan L., followed by Thomas H., followed by Antonia, followed by Bev, followed by Christian, oh no, followed by, sorry, followed by David, then Christian.
My understanding is that she wasn't authorized to sign that. So we need to check that. I believe you passed the emails out before, and then the redacted condition was given. I'll go with Laura. Just pass out the emails that were submitted before to the group. But if they, if they are the redacted ones, reading through what was redacted could have been done in a half an hour conversation. I'm not sure why he's hesitant to that. I think it's a chance of just kicking it down the curb and not dealing with the issue. And we have a lot of things that we've got to get on top of. And this is one of those things that you can't just let go. So I appreciate your time in looking at that tonight.
I just want to clarify one thing, just to everybody. The redacted stuff, it's just that in the emails, it doesn't have to do with the CTL. So if there's an email and someone says, "Did you catch the 49ers game this weekend?" That's the type of stuff that's redacted out. Nothing with the CTCL, that's all.
And that's why these emails should be passed on.
And then Antonia, then Bev.
Yeah, I guess with Mr. Tim's here, we get to kick it down the road again. But I'd like to see somebody be accountable. I mean, what's wrong with being accountable? The sooner we start, the better start we're gonna have. You know what I mean? The better government we'll have. Be accountable. Don't do it if it's not right. But again, I don't, if it's irrelevant, what are you doing for lunch and all that crap? It shouldn't be on there. And then Mr. Garman, you know, if he wants to take, he should have already read it. So I would go ahead and vote. You guys, you guys can vote it and get on with, get on with the deal so we can do some government work here.
Thank you. Antonia? Oh, pass, thank you. Bev? Not thank you for passing, but just thank you for throwing her on the card.
Okay. I was agreeing. I thought Tim should have already read the full version. So why should we have to postpone it? I mean, this type of thing should not go on. They are far left. And I was questioning when Joanna was sitting on the board to start with. I saw that as a complete conflict of interest. And then that money gets given to us, and they work their way around it. And they come up here and they say, "Oh, why should you bring it up right now?" No, you were deceived for that amount of time. It was not like you knew what was going on. Thank you.
David Halligan, followed by Christian, followed by Margaret. If we can get in queue, I appreciate it. Patty, after that.
Good evening, Board. Mr. Jones, you need to let this go. Let it lay, let the contract and the emails alone. Right now, Mr. Jones, you choose to disrupt, put doubt in the community minds of some cover-up regarding your request. And this is all coming from you, Mr. Jones, the ultimate cover-up guy, à la the AG letter of 129. You know what's wild? You want to release the hundreds of emails. But, Mr. Jones, you've stated multiple times in these meetings, you don't keep anything. You don't keep anything, remember? Unless you're trying to harm someone or something. The grant to accept the monies was accepted by this board seven months ago. And you, Mr. Jones, you were the only one of the four supervisors to not accept the 1.5 million dollars for the county, because you thought strings were attached. And you bring up R5 now because you're out and you lost badly. And you want to take someone with you, Joanna Franceskett. You bring it up now because you know as well as everyone else in this community and this room that Joanna was and is needed to complete this free and fair election of 2024 in Shasta County. Mr. Jones, you feel like you've been wronged. It's your attempt to get the score you perceive against you even. Mr. Jones, you're deceitful, a bully, vindictive, spiteful, harmful, and uncaring. Why? Because you only care about yourself. Mr. Jones, the people of this county have ejected you from this board. It's time to take your ball and go find another court to play on. Mr. Jones, can you do the right thing before you exit this building? Let go. Can you, Patrick? Can you? Let this Election Office get on with their duties and stop the interruption and allow them to certify this election and let this county start to heal.
Christian, followed by Margaret, followed by Patty, followed by Dolores.
What he said, except I need to add one thing, Mr. Jones. You're a liar. You're, you've been caught in lie after lie after lie. So we, we know damn well that you've had it out for, for the ROV's office. And, and currently, you have it out again for the ROV. Well, it doesn't matter if it's Kathy Darling Allen Allen. It doesn't matter if it's Joanna. It doesn't matter if it's Tom. What I would like to hear is Tom's opinion on this. Because Tom is a lawyer. Tom has read everything. Tom probably has some input to give here. The other thing, you know, Mr. Rickert, Mr. Jones, Mr. Cry, I think I ought to file a request of information of every single email that you have that has the word "Elections" in it. Because what you're trying to do is dig up dirt for your tinfoil hat conspiracy to attack hard-working public servants who have taken threats of life, bodily harm, who have worked countless hours, who have dealt with tinfoil hatters raising hell down there, and, and the state is looking into that. We know what this is. It's part of your ongoing attack on democracy. The same ongoing attack that you tried to pull with Laura Hobbs to not certify our elections. Your joke.
Thank you. Margaret Hansen, oh, sorry. Margaret Hansen, then Patty Plum, followed by Dolores and Nick Gardner.
I'm in agreement with you to release these emails. It's important. It is vital. I'm speaking on my own behalf as a concerned citizen because this affects me too. And considering the fact that there are so many things going on and the defiance of somebody to alter a letter that the board directed is very important to look at. 1.5 million dollars is a lot of money. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of problems in this. So please, release it to the public, however you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Plum, followed by Dolores, followed by Nick Gardner.
Thank you for taking the extra time tonight. And I appreciate just the extra ability to show what's gone on here for the last several years. We've been doing this for four years now. I always say that you know who a true person is because of the same person in public, like they are in private. And I've met that with some of you here, and some of you others have revealed yourselves. So coming to SCITCL, this is really important. We know that the group that is funding this is corrupt. And the influence that they've brought to our county, it does affect us. And Joanna Franceskett, I'm disappointed. I know she works hard. But we can't separate the staff from the system. The system is corrupt. We are at the precipice. We're so close. The floodlights we bring into every arena here, we don't want you to stop. Please keep pressing in and exposing the corruption in every category, in every arena, in, in every level of our county. Don't stop. We have to show and we have to bring accountability to them. We have to bring discipline to them. Because if we don't, people continue to laugh at us because we let these people get away of abusing us. These are abusers. And because it has to do with money, Mary, we have to address it. The board has to address it. Because it's the budget, it's funding, and it affects us. So please don't stop. Thank you, Patrick, very much for what you do.
Dolores, followed by Nick Gardner, followed by Deidre Holiday, followed by Jenny.
Wow. What a speech Patty does. What a brownie. Yeah, what a brownie. You're a hypocrite, liar. You know, you guys want to release emails. And the only reason is, is because you want Joanna to be attacked by the people that you support, Patrick, and the people that you constantly talk to in emails and on the phone when you're at work. Because we know that's what you do. You know, you be, if I was you, I would speak to legal counsel before you guys make the stupidest mistake to release those emails. Because it's all about Joanna. You could laugh all you want, Patrick. But you know what? You're gonna get yours on, in the end. You will pay the price for all the things you're doing. You are jeopardizing her safety by releasing those emails because you want these people to attack her safety. You want them to harass her, threaten her, just like they do what everybody who does inside with you don't. You try to silence her. You try to do that to everybody. Just like, like all you guys who didn't like me, don't like me because I went against Kevin and all you guys. They attacked me, but they know better now. Because I wouldn't allow them. I won't, I would not accept any emails from them. And I'll tell them like it is. Just like I told Terry Raposa. I cussed him out in an email. So there you go. So, because I don't believe that I'm gonna be, I'm not gonna be allow or allow anybody to silence me and tell me what to do, what I should be doing and thinking. I'm not like you guys. So for you guys to do that, I, if you do, I hope you do. Because you will find yourself in the biggest lawsuit. Because you're gonna jeopardize her. Soon as she gets one threatening email, that's all it's gonna take. You guys are legal counsel, CEO. You guys better be cautious of what you do.
Nick Gardner, followed by Deidre Holiday, followed by Jenny, followed by no name, followed by Jenna.
And you're all going to jail. She left that out. You know, I'm, I'm really disappointed. When we pastored you to get rid of the Dominion vote minute, vote-counting machines because we don't trust our elections, we're still right here. We don't trust our elections. And it's just so disappointing because we had the opportunity to be able to trust them. I appreciate you wanting to put those emails out because we need to see the corruption and where it's coming from and just have it right in front of us. It's our right, in my opinion. A little bit off-subject, I bought a book, Arithmetic for Dummies. I got it for Charlie Cant Count and Billy Goat Jeff because they kept mentioning that we've lost millions and millions of dollars. Maybe Christian would like to borrow it.
Deidre, Deidre, Deidre Holiday, Jenny.
Oh, my goodness.
Followed by no name, followed by Jim Burnett.
At the November 7th Board meeting, it was disappointing and even shocking to hear about how the Elections Department and county council conspired to rewrite the amended grant proposal that had been voted upon and passed by you and then submitted to the Center for Tech and Civic Life without asking your permission or even notifying you. Please vote to waive the attorney-client privilege on all email and other documents related to the CTCL so they will be available for the public to see. Making this information public can be helpful information for those who have been misled into thinking that county government employees have resigned only because they don't like the current direction of the board. The exposure of this underhanded and dishonorable stunt will serve to show us the rest of the story. It appears that many who have left their positions have done so to avoid repercussions for their insubordinate and illegal behavior. In other cases, no doubt, some just didn't appreciate or adjust to the upgrade that Shasta County has enjoyed with the direction of the current board makeup. Several suggested last week that you should just let this go because it's done and the wrongdoers are gone. Please factor into your decision the demoralizing effect it has on society when known defiance to legitimate authority is swept under the rug, as well as the encouraging message it sends to others who are hoping to do the same thing with equal impunity.
Thank you. Jenny, followed by no name.
Yeah, I think I have no name, sorry.
Followed by Jim Burnett.
It is apparent that the last three things that have been on the agenda were specifically here for a reason. This is not perchance or an accident or just simply trying to be transparent. This is an attack. This is a blatant attack on Joanna Franceskett. The hardest-working person I know. And it would be fine if you were an individual citizen and you were screaming into the void or Facebook, but you're not. You're a powerful government entity, and you are using your power to hurt one of your employees. And in case you're wondering, "I'm wearing long sleeves instead of pink because I'm ready to go back." You didn't scare me by sending me to jail last time. I'm just more prepared this time. People can laugh, but none of you are brave enough. None of you. I've heard all of you. I've heard all of you rant and rave, and I've heard all of you rant and rave about all the things that need to be done. But you're all cowards. Especially you, Patrick Jones. So you can sit there at the dais for the three meetings you have left, and you could spill vitriol for your, for your employees. But you're nothing after you leave.
Benjamin? Then Jim Burnett. And I said Benjamin because you said it was you.
Yeah, no, I got you. So let's, let's talk about the Center for Tech and Civic Life. It's essential to begin by clarifying a common misconception. Mark Zuckerberg no longer contributes to this grant. Any suggestions that this funding is tied to partisanship is simply unfounded. Supervisor Patrick Jones' allegations suggesting partisan influence are baseless and contributes nothing but divisive rhetoric. Now, let me be clear. This issue is not about partisanship. This grant was intended to support elections, to bolster resources, and ensure that election processes run smoothly and securely. By targeting this funding, the real aim is a political assassination against our most capable Elections leader, Joanna Franceskett, who is now the only remaining member of leadership with the expertise and experience necessary to navigate these challenges effectively. To lose her would be a significant blow to the integrity and functionality of our Elections Department. Looks like that's the plan. This is a political hijab, plain and simple. It's disheartening to see states, other states, taking steps to ban this type of funding based on partisan principles, which completely contradicts the actual purpose of the grant. It's important to note that even Mark Zuckerberg, during his recent testimony, didn't call the fund partisan. He merely acknowledged that it could be perceived as such, not that it was intended that way. This money exists to support election processes to ensure they are robust, accessible, and fair. To oppose it, in essence, is to oppose a source of free funding that strengthens election integrity. Right, Patrick? Who would oppose free money? We should not let political gamesmanship compromise the mechanisms that uphold our democratic principles. Don't let Jones burn the House down on the way out.
Jim Burnett. This is our last speaker, then we'll bring it back for Board discussion.
As I remember it, it was a wise decision to negotiate the money offer from the CTL to just confine it to real property or issues related to real property. And so I commend the Board for changing that. I think Kevin was the one that might have instigated that. And apparently, staff didn't follow the direction that the Board set. And so, in the interests of transparency, I say remove the privilege and let the public see how the sausage is made. We need to hold everybody accountable, or we need to exonerate the people that we think are villains. I don't know the, I don't know the story, I don't know the inside. I'm not out to get any blood or get anybody fired. But I am out to find out what's going on with staff between the Board and directives and how that's, how that works out. Maybe, maybe there's one side that's right and the other side's wrong. Usually, it's a mixture of both, but I'd like to find out. And I think it's our, it's our privilege, actually, our right to find out since we're paying for everybody's salary here. So, please remove the privilege and let's see who's doing what. Thanks.
Supervisors Jones. Thank you. So, I'm not gonna read the emails, but they, you know, if it passes, obviously, it'll be available to the public. What is upsetting for me personally is, you know, I didn't support this. It was supported by the majority of the Board to go forward with that counterproposal with those. And so, it's important that the will of the Board gets done. I specifically asked three times over the course of the next year, as Chair, if this counterproposal had been accepted by our acting CEO, Mary Williams, and at each time indicated no. And what we now know from the emails, they were accepted, just they weren't accepted to the terms that this Board authorized. And that is really disappointing. I'm gonna read you some of the minutes briefly, I'm gonna read you some of the minutes. In response to questions by Supervisor Garman and Jones, Mr. Roth stated that the grant agreement did not specify the funds could only be used for the purchase of a building. But that budget amendment would be necessary to direct the use of those funds. And the Board could specify they could be used only for the purpose of the purchase of a building. Ms. Darling Allen stated that the purchase of a building was beyond her authority, so the Board would have the ultimate authority to approve such use of funds. In response to these questions by Supervisor Cry, Mr. Roth stated that it is if the Board-directed staff could make the counterproposal to CTL to restrict the grant funds for the only to follow for the purchase of real property. She did not have the authority. This body had the authority, that grant was rewritten. The substitute motion should have been number 12, number 12 in the agreement was changed to this. "CTCL may discontinue, modify, withhold part of, or ask for the return of all or part of the grant funds if it so determines that the CTL is required to do so." That's what was sent forward. It is obvious, and once you read the emails, if it so passes, you will see the conversations go back and forth and you will see what they did to us. She couldn't, she had no authority to do it, but she did. In that, in those emails, you will see that they, they were our County Ross, Jim Ross, Kathy Allen, and Joanna Francesca, and a member of the CTL. You will see that. And so, Chair, that's, that's what I have.
All right, Supervisor Garman. Thank you, Chairman. I just want to respond to a couple of commenters who said, you know, to be, we need to be accountable. And they're absolutely correct. In order to be accountable, it means I need to have time to read through this, to understand exactly what we're releasing. I owe it to the public that you get this right. And that's all one of those.
All right, Supervisor Garman, I don't, I, I respect that. So Supervisor Rickert, you went and spoke with Ms. Morgan, correct, for what you believe to be R6, correct?
What's that got to do with this?
I just, I just have a question. You went and spoke to Les Morgan about R6, correct?
Yes, I just wanted to.
Okay, so, when you saw this Supervisor Rickert, Supervisor Garman, when you guys saw this on the agenda, did you guys, when did you guys ask Supervisor or CEO Rickert, or when did you guys ask Counsel Lamar to prep for this meeting and read these emails that we would be possibly voting on? Did you put that work in Supervisor Garman, Supervisor Rickert?
What are you talking about? This is here when I showed up tonight.
No, what I'm saying is, we get a Board packet, and there's an HTML that gives the Board report. And we were voting on this.
I print mine out all the time.
What's that?
I print mine out all the time, yeah.
Okay, so, you printed it out, did you read it? Supervisor Garman, did you read it and go ask Counsel Supervisor, or CEO Rickert? Or County, actually, I'm gonna ask both of you, CEO Rickert. Did Supervisor Garman or Supervisor Rickert come to you and ask to read these emails in the event that we voted on them as stated in our agenda, R5?
I did not get a request from either.
Email, text, phone call, Tony Express, anything? No? Counsel Lamar, did Supervisor Garman or Supervisor Rickert come to you via phone? No, you didn't. So you guys didn't do the work.
No.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna kick this down?
No, absolutely.
I'm not trying to be competitive.
Oh, no.
Well, I'm asking, like.
That's funny. I didn't know that this, I don't understand. I came here tonight, this was here on my.
R5, discuss the grant agreement with Center for Civic Life and spending plan as approved on April 9, and consider waiving attorney-client privilege to release all email and other documents.
That's what the discussion is, but.
That's what it says in our Board, I mean.
But where did it say?
Supervisor Rickert, after eight years.
What did it say, I have to call, purchase being one denial. Where did it say in here that we had to go in this, in the agenda? Please call CEO Rickert and Mr. Lamore. I didn't know these were gonna be available.
Supervisor Garman.
But I talked about.
Where is it saying about the redacted version? I don't.
What it says is, hey, listen, I, I mean.
No, no, there is a say it.
It says it right here. Consider waiving attorney-client privilege to release all email and other documents. First of all, for me.
Not redacted. And I want to read through the redacted version, it was given to me five.
But you didn't put the work in, you're not gonna, you're not gonna put the work in. All right. So here's, here's the deal, I'm gonna go into, it's not about a bully, it's about accountability. There's emails, transparency for the public.
Don't talk about transparency, because you guys don't understand.
So, hey, hey, listen, you get your time, it's our time. We made, I made a motion, I made a motion about, and I worked hard on that, I'm sorry, Supervisor Rickert, or CEO Rickert, you're in queue, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to clarify, the redacted version was only recently made available. I believe Wednesday it was made available.
Okay, no, which is, I get that. He didn't even, he didn't even read the full version. So, it doesn't matter to me. So, the, I worked hard on that emotion, on that motion for the constituents. I didn't want to take that individual, that money. What bothered me is the process was circumvented and then slow-walked. When this came back, as some have said, well, we approved it. Well, we approved it because we had no choice. And the one thing I'm not gonna do is if we have a million and a half dollars when we spent $900,000 roughly on heart, speaking with Auditor Controller Noel Deschort, making sure that that money then would go. So it's the, it's the better of the two options of getting nothing or at least reimbursing our general fund for what we spent on the heart machines. What bothers me the most is not that we didn't get to buy the building. What bothers me the most is that this body, this five-member body made a motion to go forward on something and staff and others slow-walked it and took the voice of everybody who's elected, all five of us. That's what bothers me. So we come back to the emails. I think we release them. I have no problem with that. I was totally willing, Supervisor Garman, if you or Supervisor Rickert had done this, had looked at them and said, I get, because I was. All right, well, I don't, I mean, for me, there's not a single thing on here I'm not prepped for in every meeting. So, we can, we can, so, we're gonna go ahead and take that roll call vote, we'll start with Supervisor Garman.
Follow, I'll make a correction. I did not vote on this, you keep saying, you know, five of us voted on it, so you had that wrong, you must not have read it. Three, one vote.
The original motion, the original motion for the CTL. You voted with my motion about the money. Yes, you did, the original. And that's what I care the most about, is the original motion, the one that I said, "Let's get the money for a building and have no strings attached." You agreed with me, Supervisor Garman agreed with me, Supervisor Kelstrum agreed with me. And that never made it. That should bother you to the core that we were circumvented as elected officials. And it should bother everybody up here saying, why wouldn't we? I mean, what's crazy is, would you think this is gonna like bash? Just, just read the emails, because this is truth. This is emails, like you should be thanking us, the press, everybody else should say, "Thank goodness." We're not going through a huge. Okay, so Supervisor Rickert.
Yes. So you're, you're so concerned about transparency, but when we had the letter from Monta's office, the Attorney General, you did not share that with the public. You can't have it both ways.
And in hindsight, what we do, what we do, we switch the policy to make sure all that stuff is photocopied.
No, 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 it's always been, no, it was the answer to our question of, we had sent down to the Attorney General's office.
Is this about CTL? I mean, we can talk about, I don't mind, I don't mind the conversation, I just would like to vote on this. Go ahead.
If you're gonna attack me, at least listen to me out.
Go ahead.
The fact of the matter is that you cannot have.
Hey, 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 please, hey, please, let us just have the Board discussion.
You cannot.
Both sides, please.
You cannot have it both ways. You're yelling transparency, but when it came to the point about the Zog Fire settlement, you destroyed evidence, the entire county wanted to get that information.
I never even got that letter. He, he threw it away, he admitted.
Okay, now we're gonna be doing this.
All right, all right. Hey, thank you, No Name. All right, CEO Rickert.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I believe Supervisor Garman has an alternate motion that precedes your motion.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll take that. And Supervisor Garman, if you would, still, if you would like a few minutes during the recess, totally. I mean, if there's anything, I want to give you that time, but what bothers me, it's like someone's had an offseason to train, you show up at tryouts and think, "Well, I didn't think I had to have shoes today." So it's just like, ah, this is the one who's afraid to challenge me at a free throw contest. All right, all right. You want to go there? Do you want to use sports amenities? I challenge you to a free throw contest to raise money for the Veterans Block at the library. And you refuse. So don't even go there. I talked about who's got the guts. All right, all right. If you want to recess for a few hours, I'd like you to read through this. I mean, there's a lot here. So, we'll go, we'll go ahead and take the substitute motion by Supervisor Garman. We'll take, we'll start with Supervisor Garman since it was his motion.
Supervisor Garman.
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
No.
Supervisor Cry?
No.
Supervisor Kelstrum?
No.
And Supervisor Rickert?
Fails two, three, we'll take the original motion of Supervisor Jones to release the emails, the redacted version by County Council, provide those immediately to the public. Seconded by Supervisor Kelstrum, we'll start with Supervisor Rickert to my side. Oh, seconded by me, I'm sorry, seconded by me. Sorry, Supervisor Rickert.
Supervisor Rickert?
So, can you repeat that, please, one more time?
To release the emails, the redacted emails from the analysis of correspondence regarding the Center for Tech and Civic Life.
Okay, I'm gonna say yes, but I think it's a waste of time and money.
Supervisor Kelstrum?
Yes.
Supervisor Cry?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Garman?
No.
Passes four, one.